All right, call to order, Consoles City Council meeting, July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. City Clerk take the role.
Councilman McKee?
Here.
Councilman Natus?
Here.
Councilman Topper?
Here.
Councilwoman Tiberio? Mayor Lincoln?
Here.
Solicitor?
Here.
City Clerk's here.
Okay, if y'all can please stand for the pledge and for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Praise be, Lord. We're here again, Council, City Council, or City Council, Pennsylvania. We're here to do your work, we're here to do your bidding. We are here to do what is right for all constituents and people who live in this city. Help the council and mayor make the right decisions so that the governing board of this city can be blessed and favorable. Be with us today, especially be with the people who are organizing a block party for Saturday at the Yawk River Park. We ask that you be with them and grant them your peace. We be, ask that you be with the people who are suffering from the effects of bad weather, especially through Texas and North Dakota and Washington DC and other states. Be with them and help us be saved from that kind of disaster. Be with us, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thanks, sir. Okay. We're ready into public comment, just a reminder that we have limited public comment to three minutes per speaker. I do have, we do have a special guest with us tonight. Abiram is here to do a little bit of shadowing of our government, to see how things work. And so invited him tonight, if you want to just come up here, just briefly, just introduce yourself to us. I'm gonna introduce you to Councilman McKee after the meeting and Councilman Topper after we're done.
Hi, my name is Abiram, I'm a rising senior at Franklin Regional, I live in Murraysville. My mom, Padma De Chilkadi, she's worked in Connelsville at Chestnut Ridge Counseling Services for about fifteen years now, so I kind of, you know, I grew up coming to Connelsville like every Friday when she came to work. If I couldn't be, obviously at home alone. But I never really got to explore the city and I'm interested in a career in politics. And so this was kind of a way for me to get to know the city and also learn more about local government and how it works. I'm really excited to see the whole process of this meeting today. Thank you.
Awesome, we're happy, we're happy for you to wanna come here.
Yeah.
We're hoping after you see all this that you still wanna continue. Okay. So I see James is here, James, you're up.
Great.
All right. Cardinals Record would like to request that we do one more month of the Sunset Bazaar Farmer's Market, uh, Night Market. That would be September tenth. We wanna do a kind of an American Idol kind of talent thing, I don't know if anybody was there last, our, our last one, we had a twelve-year-old boy that got up and started singing opera and French. It was unbelievable. So we had a few other talents that were there, we thought for August, we will invite talents and then have judges and then in September have the final show. Our vendor, our first event, we've doubled in our second event and we're gonna triple
Awesome.
with vendors and people in our third event for the month of August. It's a great, great evening, the way the park is when the sun sets and and the second request would be, instead of closing the one block of Carnegie, we would like to close that one block of South Street between the library and the park for vendor loading and unloading.
Would you need the whole?
Just from Carnegie to Pittsburgh.
About, just about the parking for the apartment building? Is that, is that South Street, that, that, that street?
No, it's the street, that one block between the library and the park?
Yeah.
With the brick wall, is it?
That goes down to Pittsburgh Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you're just saying like, is there any way we can still give the lower half of that?
Sure, we can.
People with those apartments?
We've just been running into a backup.
Like maybe like the bottom six spots or whatever, so there at least, so I'll park it.
At least, yeah, block it to the stairs.
Block it to the stairs?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's easy. Do we have to do anything with that thing?
We, we will apply for a permit for.
Yeah, I mean, they'll apply, but you guys don't.
We don't have to, hey, hey, this.
Cool.
Yeah, of course, are you, is the, is the curcuma tournament still happening?
We're talking about that right now. The, 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 nobody's dates, the dates aren't working out for
Okay.
certain people and we're looking at maybe the end of August instead of beginning.
Okay. Whatever, just let's, I mean, let us, keep us, we'll keep offering, we'll help promote it or whatever, just let people know.
Perfect, but yeah, if you haven't been to the Night Market, the Sunset, so you gotta, gotta check it out, it's really, really cool.
What is the date in August?
Thirteen.
August thirteenth.
And then September tenth would be the last one.
All right.
Great, thank you guys.
Thanks, sir. Okay, Mr. Rock, you're up.
I'm backing into politics for those signs back. We've taken, I got some pictures here of the, I'll bring them up Saturday, we woke up to this, everybody going to work. Explore in a trailer parked in front of the house, they were there almost fourteen, sixteen hours. They finally moved. My brother, they finally give home from working out of parking lot, parking lot, we noticed it's empty. We never had this problem, especially with the boat, with the rafters with the signs around. Does anybody have an idea why they took them down?
We don't have, we don't allow permit parking anywhere in the city because we have no enforcement of it. I think they took it down when the, when we, they get away with the parking lot authority.
Well, I stopped, I stopped in the city garage one day and talked to the guys and hey, they're faded, can you replace them? Next day they were gone. And I didn't know what the reason was, but you guys.
There's no enforcement of it, that's, that's, that's the.
But nobody did, nobody parked there at all. Here's the others thing, and this, everybody parked in front of the house because of this, I'll show you these pictures. You know where the ball field used to be?
Yes, yes.
The hotel blocked it all off. Taped it off, put signs up, it had a guy standing there, wouldn't let anybody park in the city lot. And they did that till about eight or nine o'clock in the evening when their event was done. And this was on a day of the river festival.
Is this, are they blocking off the, the city's parking lot or are they blocking off their parking lot? You can't tell by that.
The sign, it's, would be real close to where the line is.
There's a house on Misen Ave.
What does, what does this, what does this say right here? What is that logo right there, see it says parking this way, they, they, hotel parking's here, which is that there?
Is that the event center?
Is that their, they have a logo like that?
There's a player on it.
They, Greg, what they did was, you know where the ball field used to be?
I mean, that definitely is roped off and that definitely is our parking lot.
They got up in the morning and taped it all off, put signs up.
That's definitely a parking lot.
Yeah, that's the river's edge. So that's the restaurant.
Yes, we definitely, we will, we'll definitely be making contact with, with the owners over that. They're not permitted to ever block off a public parking lot like that.
You know everybody ended up parking on the street, that's where the guy goes.
If we don't, like, it's a general question, I guess, was why can't we just have no parking signs? Not permit parking, but why can't you just have signs that say no?
That's where, that's where they park.
But if we do that, then how does that affect them when you have people come visit them or they can't park in the street then?
Even Johnny, he parks on a street all the time. The two cars. That's the reason they, I didn't get happy twenty-five years ago, they put up the permit parking signs. And nobody parked there, even though we didn't have permits.
They, I mean, at one point, I felt like the, the parking lot authority, when they were enforcing the meter parking meters and everything else, probably that was part of their duty too. I mean, I, I'm guessing the chief hasn't been with the city that long, long enough to.
That was way before my.
I was gonna say, that was way before me too, so.
I was telling you in the office, I had a lady stop by, you guys seen all cicada killers?
Yeah.
Well, I have flowers out front, they're all over the place. Lady says, why don't you spray those bugs? I told her, I said, I put them there so you wouldn't park, but she didn't think it was funny. But yeah, that's, usually we can't, well, for some reason Wednesday and Thursday seem to be busy at the, at the restaurant. But when they have an event, it's.
And that's gonna, I mean, this, this is definitely something that needs to be addressed now because they definitely have a lot of events coming up, weddings, large weddings, we will be having and that. The first thing they're gonna be, we're gonna address is whoever roped off our public parking lot.
And that was a lady from the restaurant.
So I don't, I don't know who or why that would have been done like that, 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 that's not gonna work for us.
The guy that did that, the guy that was guarding the parking lot, somebody do think his picture, so I guess he didn't wanna get involved in it. But he, they were telling people you can't park there.
That's not good. That's not good.
You can't, you can't, they can't block our, our public parking lot, now they can, they one hundred percent can work their, their hotel lot.
Oh, yeah.
You know, 'cause I understand that people park in there too. But they cannot block our city parking lot without coming to our city council for whatever reason.
Hotel parking lot, I hate to say it, on Saturday, Sunday's full of rafters, bicyclers. I mean, I don't understand, you're gonna go bicycle so you can get as close as you can to a bike path, you know, maybe walk a little bit?
Yeah.
But they all head down that way and park.
I, I don't know what the solution is, I, I don't know, putting the signs back up? But we don't have enforcement of them, so I don't know, if we do put them up and if people park on.
If you put them back up, I guarantee, I almost guarantee nobody's gonna park there. Other than my brother and any kind of company you get.
Thirty seconds.
What do you, what, what is your opinion?
I mean, I mean, with respect to the parking issues.
With that street, like that, I always have the permit parking there.
Well, you, you, like you said, you can't enforce permit parking, there's no ordinance in place and there's no system in place to enforce permit parking. Your options really are just, you know, no parking or time limit parking, but then that impacts, you know, people that actually live in that adjacent neighborhood. Is there any other options? So lease parking, contract parking signs. Oh, you, lease parking, or permit parking signs, I mean, other than the fact that you can't force them for any dangerous reason.
I mean, I guess locally, I, I mean, I guess locally, people would know that, but people visiting from out of town or whatever will not know that.
Like I said, Greg, as long as those signs were there, we had, nobody parked.
Don't have a problem if they were there.
Do we have to go to the, back to the traffic committee?
Yeah, I mean, that would, yeah, well, that's something we're gonna talk about after the meeting.
Okay.
I have the letter Johnny got from the last traffic, that's the one I asked Rita about getting minutes from the last one.
It's all our minutes are, are on our city website, right?
Traffic committee?
Traffic committee?
Oh, oh.
Yeah. I said, I'd talk to Carol when she got back.
Yeah, this was August twenty-second, they sent Johnny a letter telling him, no, they read, like, burning signs.
They denied your request, have them put it back up? Okay, well, we'll, we'll discuss this.
Thank you guys, thank you.
All right, I just wanna discuss. I think there's this, yeah, I think there's, that opens some discussions to be had with, about a few things. With our parking, parking lots and stuff, and I know that's kind of one of the topics Ms. Kaminski's here to talk about tonight too.
All right. All right, Casey, I think you are out. Don't be nervous.
I'm a public speaker so. I'm going to read this so I don't ramble. Hi, City Council, my name is Casey Piper, I am here to ask you to consider leasing us the Yawk River Park concession stand. My husband and I own three properties in the city. Our contributions in property taxes alone are twenty thousand dollars over the last three years. We purchased the Fayette AMS building, which now houses Realty One and Devotion Kickboxing, who also contribute to the livelihood of Connelsville. I've also owned Mira Mira Salon for the last twelve years. I've been planning a way over the last few months to bring healthy food choices into the city. I'll have wrap salads, fruit, smoothie bowls and more, quick grab and go items to bring revenue to the bike trail. I'll support other local vendors, vendors with spotlight days to have pop-up drink vendors to serve their drinks with my equipment so they can get their names and businesses out there also. We need to utilize how busy our trail is, I've met many people from other states and even other countries passing through our city. I've committed employees ready to be there as soon as possible. I can have my serve stays completed in the next two weeks if needed, I've already started reading the course. My mom ran the Connelsville School District cafeteria for twenty years and is willing to help me also. I've spoken with Brian Kiesel and he can have my LLC done within seven to fourteen days. The name I am proposing is the Yawk Stop. We support all the local businesses and events in the city. This is our opportunity to try to unite, unite everyone and to get the town excited to see what vendors will be the guest star of the week. It will draw positive attention to the area, our friends are already excited to see this idea take off. I'm also willing to work out an agreement to give back to the city in some way with the profits. Thank you for your time, and here's my logo.
Awesome.
I know you guys aren't having on the agenda to terminate James's, but.
Yeah, we want, I mean, we, that was a, you know, plan of having somebody in there, was that presence down, down at the park. I know we have the visitor's center now there, so it's always in that, in that part of it, but it was nice to have someone working that concession stand. Especially with the amount of bikers that are coming through our city now. I know they're always looking when they come in there, 'cause James had a, you know, he had, he had a good product.
Yeah.
He had a very good product. And I know that return bikers always looked to see if he was open or not and.
I know even when I've been in line down there, everyone's been asking him for snacks. And I just thought, quick things, like nothing that needs cook, nothing to hold up a line. I was going to do like a salad bar, make your own salads, make your own fruit bowls, like if you've ever been to fruits and roots and greens, for example, practicing making. Aussie bowls and smoothies and quick. Thank you.
Can you do me a favor, what you just read, could you email it to?
You can have this.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I can use it, yeah. Yeah.
This way, it could be kind of a formal proposal, right, Tim?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think we'd have to.
Be a submission, yeah, I mean, you still need a license agreement.
Yes, and Tim, I mean, that's him. I guess you'd have to give it to Tom and give it to Bob and talk, discuss this all, but I love the idea, I think it's a great idea. And it'd be cool to have you down there.
You gonna, you planning on having the unhealthy coffee?
But I don't really wanna compete with coffee in this town right now, so I think I'm staying out of that.
When it gets Christmas and the workers, you back down there early in the morning?
Yes, I would have theme menus, I love a theme.
At least just for.
Just for the workers.
For the workers.
You gotta throw something unhealthy in there.
Well, I would have some unhealthy things, but.
Perfect.
Thank you, thanks.
We're gonna be, after we do, we'll, let me circle them back.
I have to go back to work.
Yeah, you can go.
And I, I didn't know if you needed the box to be out.
No, no, if I.
But we can schedule a time.
Yes, yeah, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, come on. Okay. Mr. Kaminski, you are up. Miss Kaminski, sorry, Kaminski.
Okay, Your Honor, City Council, thank you for having me for the third time in three months, feeling at home here now. I'm with the Connelsville Lions, we would like to paint a mural on the wall in the city parking lot up there. We've hit a little speed bump, so I'm here to give you an update. The wall needs some work before it can be painted. In particular, there are about a dozen cracks in that wall where water is leaking through very frequently because it rains here a lot. Okay? Some of those cracks are kind of small, they begin about this high down to the pavement, some of them are more like this high, okay? And some of them have created stains. Just, this morning, just by chance, my wife and I were in the parking lot at the Connelsville Walmart and we met a masonry contractor there, Mr. Musgrove of Musgrove Masonry. So he went to the wall with us, and we just took him there just to get information, you know, we're not actually acting at this point. He said that along the base of the wall, where the wall meets the pavement, there are some drains there, but they may be clogged. He said if he were hired to do the work, he would try to unclog them, but he wasn't sure that he could. In any case, he would fill in those cracks with polyurethane down to within about an inch of the pavement. He would leave the last inch unfixed in order to leave a place for the water to drain out. All right? It would take him and his crew two full days to do the job. And if he were hired, he would charge four thousand dollars to do this work. I just found out all of this today. I didn't hire the guy or anything, we were just gathering information. Okay? We contracted, contacted another contractor, Champion Waterproofing, who are coming Thursday at two o'clock to look at the wall. So if anybody from City Council or the City Street Department would like to join us at two o'clock in the parking lot up there, they would be more than welcome.
And that's the time of day, or done for the day, is at two? If you could move that to an earlier time, we definitely could make sure that somebody from the Public Works is there.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
At two o'clock is their end, their end time of their day.
Okay, I'll see what I can do and I'll let them know and I'll let the city clerk know.
Yes, you said Thursday, right?
Thursday, yes, exactly, right. I just found out most of this information this morning, I shared it with the Connelsville Lions, I'm sharing it with you now. You know everything they know, they know everything you know. I don't know what their stance will be about this going forward, I can't speak for the group. I'm not even on the board of the Connelsville Lions, I'm just the lucky lion who got appointed to head up the project for the group. They're meeting next Monday again. That's pretty much everything I know.
Okay. Have we had, has the guys, have they, have they?
I don't think so, yeah.
I'm gonna have Rita reach out to Bill, Bill is our acting foreman for our Public Works, our full-time foreman is off. Yeah, he had surgery, he's off for like the next two months.
Yeah.
So we won't have access to him. I'm gonna have Bill to get guys up there and look at that and see.
Yeah.
If that's something that, if that's something that we can do? 'Cause I feel like just putting part of your urethane on cracks, to me, is something that doesn't take skilled level of, of being a mason to do that.
Well, he talked about digging into these cracks and putting some sort of rod in there.
So anything, any kind of work on our city property is gonna have to definitely be submitted to the city for us to review? So, 'cause if, it's like a contractor would come over and do work and then the wall would then collapse?
Right.
We're gonna be in a world of hurt up there, you know what I'm saying? Like, I wanna make sure, I understand they're professionals, but we're gonna make sure they're all on the same page.
Right.
Have them.
And that's one thing, they called me a little bit ago and I haven't had a chance to kind of bring this deep up to you guys or anything. One of the things I would have mentioned too is that our process is probably, you know, a little bit different for us getting bids and how we have to go about it and everything as well. So, you know, if, you know, if that was something that would involve us, that would possibly take a little bit more time too.
At least two months, 'cause we'd have to put them up for bid, open them up the next meeting, the bids, whatever bids we would get and then award the bid and then we'd give them a certain amount of time to complete the project. So actually probably be, you know, let's just say six months, 'cause that's how the government contract thing work. You give them, you have to give them a certain period of time to start and finish. Like with the boat ramp, just as, as an example, they just awarded it last month, they, they gave them six months to complete, so.
Or apply for a grant, take a little bit.
Yes, yes.
The, the one thing Mr. Musgrove did emphasize was whoever works on it, if, if, if they tell you that they could just slap some concrete on the wall and fix the problem, don't believe them.
Oh, no, 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 there's definitely, I mean, it's found, you know, I would like to have the guys go up there and just at least try to see if the drains are clogged or not.
Yeah.
And if it's something, I mean, regardless of the mural or whatever, I mean, if it's something that is a lot, lower cost to fix right now and it maintains the wall for a longer period of time, 'cause regardless, the wall needs to last.
Yes.
You know, and we don't wanna be forced faced with a crumbling wall in fifteen years, whoever has to deal with that? You know?
I think doing something would be good for the long-term health of the wall.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe we can work on that.
So, anyway, we'll try to reschedule that meeting for earlier in the day on Thursday. And we'll let you all know.
I would love, love for us to have somebody there, I mean, I, if, if at all possible, even if, if you can't change it from two to maybe Rita can come up there for sure, to have somebody from the city there and be a part of it.
Right.
Unless, I don't know.
Or if anybody wants to donate their time, I mean, we have a lot of skilled.
Uh, we do.
People around the town.
I mean, Jimmy, I mean, our public works foreman, he is a mason, I mean, that's his trade, uh, before he came to our city, that's what he's done his whole career, so.
It is your wall, so, you know, when you got, what you can do to, of course, makes it a cute thing.
Yes.
Yeah, we want you to, we want the mural to get a lot of good law too, they don't wanna be having to dig into the mural in two years to fix something either, so.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, we'll.
Thursday, we'll regroup Thursday.
Thursday, we'll keep each other off.
Okay, if I had a chance, if you actually could get the meeting changed, can we let Rita know?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, just call, yeah.
Just give her a call and let her know and we'll, we'll make sure that somebody will for sure.
Right, right, yeah, we weren't expecting to go up there this morning, we ran into this guy at Walmart, so we just took advantage of the opportunity. Well, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Lewandowski, you're up.
Thank you.
Hi, City Council, thanks for allowing me to speak, my name's Cindy Lewandowski, I reside at two oh five North Eleventh Street in Connelsville. I've lived up on the hill after moving from Dunbar Township approximately twelve, twelve and a half years ago now. And everybody on the block, and even when I grew up, my parents, grandparents had a grocery store, everybody took pride in their property up there. There is one property at two eleven North Eleventh Street that I have addressed so many times. There are rats that are all over the place, under the deck, all kind of critters, skunks. We've had to get exterminators, we had a possum that destroyed part of our property for coming over there. They have weeds, every, I don't wanna say species of poison growing all over, I can't even cut my property in between. Now, I had addressed this to Mr. Curry numerous times and the guy does come when I guess he's confronted the trim. But I was told, and it's not my responsibility, you know, I try to beautify the two properties that I own up there and pay taxes. And now everybody else seems like they're fixing up too, we had one other, I swear, an old gentleman died, but somebody bought this property and it's being taken care of. So this is the only disgusting, unsafe.
Is this owner occupied or is this a rental property?
No, what it was is, the guy that owned fifty-one auto parts, Joe Lucasco, he owned it, okay? I tried to buy it for years since I was up there, because I originally owned it before I built my house in Dunbar Township. So I asked him, because I have two children and, you know, just to be around in the neighborhood so I could acquire the properties and they could be close by and my grandkids. So he kept him haunting, well, I don't know, my, my ex-wife has a sister that might move from Arizona, blah, 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 I kept hearing, you know, well, I'll think about it and blah, blah, blah. So eventually, I found out that he just gave it to his granddaughter, okay? So it's probably at least three years ago, they did come up, her and a boyfriend, okay? And she said she was a hairdresser, maybe she would possibly try to do hair or, so they gutted out at least the top floor, okay? And, I mean, they haven't been back, so her dad comes every now and then and cuts the grass, okay? That's about all that's done there. So I ask him every time, do you know what, I don't know what my daughter's gonna do. Well, I mean, that's one thing, I mean, if people can't afford to beautify their property, not a lot of people have income. But you gotta keep it maintained.
Hundred percent.
If you worry about, you know, the grass being so long or, you know, trash or anything, I mean, these are rodents. And honestly, I was privy because I lived there before, before I built my house. I have all the pictures of what it looked like and Mr. Lucasco allowed me to go in there and the kids, the girl, the daughter. It's filled with black mold, okay? Everywhere.
What's, what's the status?
It's so dangerous.
Is it vacant, vacant structure, like you were on a very regular basis?
Oh, so no one's living in it, so is this a part of the vacant building ordinance and all that?
Yep.
So are we, I mean, what's the, so, can he not be ticketed for not maintaining the property or?
He's been taken before for the grass, I'm not gonna lie, I've been up there recently, so I'll go get it tomorrow.
Well, he, I had just spoken to you just last week, well, he came and trimmed part of the poison that grows in between our houses.
Any, any videos or pictures of the, of the rats and everything?
I don't have of the rats, but my cousin's gonna speak to other neighbors and we have neighbors in that neighborhood that witnessed, I even talked to Vernon Oler a long time ago when he was on, you know, about the property. But anyway, the roof, the flat roof, the rubber's off of it, I have the pictures. It's caving in, it's leon or plywood, it's filled with black mold.
When, when do we get to the point of being condemned by the Health, Health Board?
It's asbestos, I can't afford to tear it down.
No, 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 it's not your responsibility.
No.
But I'm just saying, when does the, when does the Health Board get involved and they declare?
Last year when I was in, the roof was knocked down.
Okay.
So if I walk down this year, I have not got a vacant building, which is not done yet, so I'm still waiting to have.
So when you do the ordinance, you have to actually go?
The ordinance said roof in there, yes, we're gonna have an issue with that.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Can you do the vacant building?
Okay.
Okay, it just seems like he just complies with cutting the grass or trims a little bit and, I mean, it's really out of hand now.
Maintaining that house, it's gonna.
Oh, no, it's gonna cave in, there's black mold, my son.
The Health Board could get involved and declare it a nuisance and have it on the demolition list and then we can take those steps further.
Yeah, my, my son actually has a video of the basement, I mean, it's all black mold, I mean, there's hog guts.
If you have these, this, those kinds of things, that would, would, they'll go along with, for Tom to.
Yeah, I know they never went inside before, they went by the outside or whatever, if they did that.
We'll, we got there this weekend and we'll see, we'll start back and see where that is.
And I mean, I'm not saying, but I've been patient enough, I, I, I'm just, it's a health, health concern. I mean, you wouldn't like somebody like that and you have grandkids and everybody up there's trying to beautify their properties on North Eleventh Street. I mean, it's really, people are really taking pride again, you know, even the people that moved in and making it really nice and pleasant, you know, so.
I appreciate you coming to the meeting.
But, yeah.
Hopefully, Tom will be able to get up there and we'll, he may move this along further, put more pressure on this person.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, but, you know, I can't live like this anymore, it's making me get sick.
There's not more people around you, live around you.
There is, but a lot of people, they won't public speak or, you know, what they did in the neighborhood and you came around, I'm just, I guess, a loudmouth, whatever. And not, not afraid to speak. And not, not afraid to speak. And can I just address one other thing about?
Yes, ma'am.
Why did our, with the garbage company, take away, I love the fall and spring cleanup.
They wouldn't bid on our contract if we kept it in there.
Why is it just us? Little Vanderbilt has it, South Conneville.
They have dumpsters. They, South Conneville, Conneville Township, they have dumpsters that they put at their Public Works building, and you have to take all your stuff there.
For the, for the cleanup?
For a cleanup, yes.
Dunbar Township, I know, has that, but I mean, when, when I called in, they said, well, on the third, whatever, day, you get one item. I used to put twenty items out.
Well, the problem was, we have it, people and their friends and their cousins and their extended family would load up their trucks and bring everything into the city and dump it on our streets.
Oh, oh. Yeah, I really missed that.
That's where they said it cost them fifty thousand dollars every, every cleanup, a cost of garbage company, fifty thousand dollars.
I, I just really missed that. That was a way to clean up the neighborhood.
We do encourage you to take advantage of that once a month, because the idea is to try to keep slowly getting rid of things.
Well, when I moved from a large four thousand square foot house out Dunbar Township, and I've lived up there twelve years and still have a three-car garage that's filled with things knocked junk, but you know what I'm saying. But thanks, I've talked long enough.
Thank you.
I appreciate listening to me.
Mr. Tressler, you're, you're next.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to counter, I agree or reinforce what she said. I live at thirteen thirty-six Banning Avenue, been up there for, I'm seventy-five years old. I've lived up there except for the time I was away, probably fifty-plus years at least, and I've noticed that neighborhood over the years has, it's changed. It used to be all Italians. We used to have Italian bash every year up there, you know, and everybody kept their properties pretty well-kept. And that home that she's talking about, if you go up there, the roof, the tar paper's flapping in the breeze, it's laying over the side of the house roof. And it has to have a hole in the roof. I'm gonna like, I'm an engineer, professional engineer, and I look at that and I say, I don't understand it. I mean, we pay our taxes, we, you know, got people coming around and say, if you don't keep your property right, you know, you, you know, you're told about it. That place, they cut the weeds, they cut the bushes down. If you go on the back porch where she had a womanized deck, all the stuff that he cut three, four years ago is piled up there, it's never been removed. So it's a perfect place for rats, for any kind of animal to go in there and make, you know, and live under. And like she said, you know, my Uncle Frank used to own that house, you know, and beside that house, in her house, you can't, sometimes you can't, couldn't walk through there because, like she said, all the poison ivy and whatever, it just, the way it looks. And I don't know, I just don't understand why, you know, it just can be let go like that.
We, so, we have limited enforcement. We use every avenue that we can use for people to maintain their properties. We have the quality life that we can, Tom now can issue tickets and over and over, we have the vacant building ordinance. But unfortunately, these people that own these properties that don't wanna maintain them, they know how to play this game. And I'm hoping that Tom, when he goes up there this week, you know, next couple of days, he can, you'll see something different and we can further along this process. I mean, ultimately, what's gonna, where we're at is it's demolition of this house. There ain't gonna be no fixing this house. It's gonna be getting the owner.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think it's probably let go for so long that, I mean, I never went inside it. I mean, I can remember when they were tearing it, like she said, the granddaughter and her, or her boyfriend or whatever went in there and they tore all the walls down. We thought they were finally gonna fix, play something and do something with it. And then for whatever reason, you know, they stopped.
Probably money.
Probably, it was, it's money, so. But anyway, I don't wanna belabor the point, it's just, I just wanted to, you know, come with her.
I appreciate you coming, and then like I said, Tom will definitely be investigating this here in the next couple of days and hopefully we'll be able to.
Thank you very much.
Move this along, put more pressure on the owner. It's a, it's an, it's an everyday battle, just so you all know. This is, this is one of a hundred houses in there.
Well, you could look at, look at some of the buildings in town, you know, where the guy jumped out of the window, that building there eventually, who ends up tearing it down? The city.
Well, we're hopeful that somebody's gonna purchase it and re, bring it back to life.
That's why I said this town has so much potential.
Yeah.
If I was retired, I'd volunteer to paint all the outside of the properties and storefronts and plant shrubs, do anything to beautify it, but thanks.
Well, thank you. Okay. Our K. Bonney, last but not least. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I am going to take my bank hat off, because there's a resolution in here, but if there's any questions during that time, I can answer those. Okay, now I'm gonna put my community hat on and we're gonna talk about America Two Fifty in Conneville. There will be a public forum on July thirtieth, five-thirty in the evening, at the Porter Theater for any Conneville resident or greater Conneville resident that would be interested in helping us plan the celebration that needs, that will be brought into Conneville. We're a little behind some of the county events, but the Chamber Events Committee had a meeting this morning about things that are going on and we said we have to jump on this, get it soon. So we're reaching out to folks that aren't the same folks that are on every committee or on everything. We want our civic organizations, our fire departments, our churches, our historical societies, folks from, whatever. If you just like Conneville history and you have something to offer and to add, come out to the meeting and we'll tell you what we're, what our plans are. We're planning on everything from involving the kids to having the storefronts decorate something in a different theme every month that deals with not only American history, but Conneville history and how we built America here. We're gonna resurface the boot and call industry history, the railroad history, and whatever else, I mean, bring it up. We were talking, I was talking today about the history of the churches and bringing back those church tours that we did. And have something different every month for people to realize we do live in a community that has a very rich history and we were here to build America before even the Revolutionary War. So we wanna start next month with the Whiskey Rebellion. The Historical Society is already doing a presentation at the train station. It's a dinner lecture series that the Historical Society does. But I think we should expand on that and we're going to ask businesses to do a window decoration or something to commemorate that, because that Whiskey Rebellion came through here. And then Porter Theater, of course, in September, we're gonna focus on that history of what he contributed to the filmmaking in America and use that along with the festival that's coming. So July thirtieth, five-thirty, Porter Theater, come on out, listen to what we have to say. And we can make this together. We can really pull this off and make it really better than, bless you.
Bless you.
Than, than what has been done before.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna move right into the treasurer's report. The treasurer is not here this evening, so that's in your packet. Take a look at that, and then we're gonna go right into the controller report. Christian.
Thank you. Here's your monthly summary. The general fund is at one million, four hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and one cent. Investment account is at four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Recreation fund is at one hundred and thirteen thousand, eleven dollars and seven cents. Capital improvement is at one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents. The police canine account is at twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the diversity board is at thirteen thousand, forty-nine dollars and six cents. Thank you so much.
All right, sir, thank you so much. Okay. Got correspondence. Uh, the correspondence is from John Listen. This is, hi Rita, I'd like to request a road closure for the four hundred block of Wills Road on August fifteenth from four P M. to eleven P M. for a neighborhood walk party. I think I meant to say block party.
Yeah.
But maybe, because I don't know, a walk party.
I think it was autocorrected.
It goes autocorrected?
Yeah.
Uh, be resolved by the City Council, City of Conneville, to close the four hundred block of Wills Road on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, four P M. until eleven P M. Further authorizing items listed on the utilization form pending a review and approval of the police chief, public works foreman, and fire chief. I assume it was their second. So my neighborhood has a block party every summer. We've done this for many years now to close off the four hundred block, which if people come up Wills Road, they can still turn up Jefferson, go through an alley, come back down Kensington and get back on Wills, or they can go down Jefferson, down to Nassau. So there's, you just have to go around that block to get up the end of Wills Road or come down to the bottom of Wills Road. So that's, we haven't had any issues with that since it's been going on and the road would, will be open by, back open by eleven o'clock that evening, so it's a Friday night. I just wanted to let everybody know that. Uh, Sue Clark, take the vote.
Councilman Chopper?
Yes.
Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilwoman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Okay. Our next one is from the Polish Club. It says, dear sir or ma'am, the purpose of this request is to see if the Polish Club could borrow some chairs, tables, and a tent to use the Polish Club picnic on August thirty-first of this year. It would be very much appreciated. Thank you for your consideration. We have chairs, tents, and tables that we're gonna lend out to another non-city group? That would, I've never, we've never done that. I, I. I mean, we have never, ever, ever done that. It's always been a record for a city board. Let me read it. Be resolved by the City Council, City of Conneville, to grant permission to the Polish Club use of chairs, tables, and tents for the annual club picnic on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as requested on the utilization form. I assume it was their second.
I didn't, I have no idea about that.
I don't know idea about this. We have. It's all, they want three tents, fifty chairs, and six tables. I, I don't understand that request, because like I said, I don't ever recall this ever.
I mean, typically, typically the city, if you're renting city facilities.
I don't even know if we have fifty chairs.
We have to have some kind of... Is this, is this gonna be located like on a city property or?
Because normally they ask, they can use the alley between the Public Works Building and their, and their building. We always, that's always, that's always been the request, but now they're requesting tables and chairs, and I'm not, I, I don't wanna start opening this can of worms and then, because we have like a limited amount of tables and chairs that we use for our events, city events.
Everyone who rented chairs.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, technically, you can't see. We don't, I mean, we have fifteen tables in there. I think it's fifteen, we have fifteen tables. I think that's what we have, and not even fifty chairs. I don't even think we have that. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think.
If you, if you haven't rented out or allowed people to borrow chairs and tables independently of a city event.
Right. I don't ever recall that. Do you all recall that? I don't, I mean, I don't wanna, I just, I feel like.
Yeah, I mean, some kind of heads up or something, just a.
This to me is not a, a big request for our, I, I just don't. I mean, they have a whole public, they have a club down there.
Especially if it would be the first time that this event is used.
Yeah, I don't. So, I might just, no, there's no second?
Yeah, it just dies for a lack of a second.
Okay, this is gonna die for a lack of a second. And then we'll dress this, we'll, we'll dress this at another time. All right. And we're going to the regular agenda. Be resolved by the City Council, City of Conneville, to accept the minutes from the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting. I assume it was their second. Second. Sue Clark, take the vote.
Councilman Chopper?
Yes.
Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tiberio? Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Uh, be resolved by City Council, City of Conneville, to waive the four-day resolution rule to allow for items submitted after the four-day rule to be read at the meeting tonight. Such resolutions will be marked with an asterisk. I assume it was their second. Second. Sue Clark, take the vote.
Councilman Chopper?
Yes.
Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tiberio? Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Okay, chief, police department report.
Honorable mayor, members of City Council, Conneville, I respectfully submit the following report for the month of June for the City of Conneville Police Department. A total of three thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents in fines was remitted to the city treasurer. We answered four hundred and twenty-six complaints for the month, requests for assistance, twenty, courtesy warnings issued, five, criminal and traffic-related arrests, twenty-one, traffic accidents investigated, ten, traffic citations issued, eighty, non-traffic citations, eighteen, broken down as follows, four for disorderly conduct, five for harassment, two for local ordinance violations, public drunkenness and similar misconduct, five, and two for retail theft. A total of seven thousand, fifty-four miles were traveled with the police vehicles for the month. Any questions on the report?
No, sir. So do you, were you able to get the new car yet?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, we, it's, it's where the upfitting is going to take place and I think they're still waiting on some equipment to come in that they ordered for it. So, and I think we just, I don't even know if they got the check for the car yet. I don't know if it was sent, because I have no idea.
If it was signed, it was sent.
I have no idea.
Was it signed? I don't know if it was signed.
But I do know that the, the equipment was paid for, paid for that through the Heinz companies.
Okay.
But yeah, we're still waiting on that. We are currently now, all of the cars that do not have cameras in them, they're getting put in yesterday and today over at the fire station.
Oh, nice.
So after tomorrow, all of our cars will be equipped with cameras. And that's Motorola, the radios, the new radios for all the cars, evidently someone from nine-one-one and someone from the Motorola Solutions Company did not communicate well. And they were supposed to put the mobile radios, they're, they're all in, they're brand new, they're, they're at nine-one-one and they did not get programmed yet. So we have to have the Motorola people come back in and install those after the programming's done. Lack of communication from them too has nothing to do with us. So we're still waiting.
Okay, well, that's good. At least they're in, you're gonna have.
They're in, everything's in, the portable radios, the car radios, the car cameras, like I said, all the car cameras will be installed by the end of the week.
What will we do with the, the ones that we're gonna be retiring, the radios?
Uh, there is, I know, well, they're still usable, but they're slowly falling apart.
Is that something that the police auxiliary could use?
They would have to go to nine-one-one and they would have to deprogram and reprogram, reprogram them into into, into frequencies that they're permitted to have, and there's a lot that they're not.
Now, I know that we had discussed before about maybe giving a couple radios to the trail council when they were going to work on it, because we had some medical emergencies that their cell phones were out of service. We had discussed that and I thought maybe, I think we came to a conclusion, we were good with giving them a couple radios that would be able to call the police or call for help if they were out of service with their cellphone. Is that something that we could still do or?
I'd have to run that through the high-ups of nine-one-one to see if we can get permission to do that.
I just, I, I, I'm hoping we can, because I feel like that would definitely give, increase them, that they're just, their safety of them being out if they're cutting down trees or something, would they have a medical emergency and they're, because there are definitely a lot of spots in our area that do not, the cell phones do not work.
We'd definitely have to look into the legalities of that, right?
Well, yeah, definitely, because there are restrictions.
On who has control of them, so we'd have to check into that first.
Okay, but if it's at all possible. Okay. But if it's all, at all possible, I'd love to see them be able to have that ability to have at least one radio to take with them when they're out on it. Such when they go that way, cause you lose services a couple miles out or three miles out, your service is really not good.
You could always probably have them do like a public works. That way you're not worried about sensitivity materials being out. Like if you would be on the police or fire.
What, what, I don't understand, what does that mean?
They'd have to be programmed with certain, uh, channels that wouldn't have access to what. But, but I don't know how they would get directly in touch with us on our frequency. That's the only problem. They could call nine-one-one maybe with those and then nine-one.
And that would be.
Then nine-one-one could, you know, let us know.
I feel like that's, if that would be the route and if they only called nine-one-one with them, to me is one hundred percent.
Yeah. Yeah, that's perfect. That would be perfect.
Would be perfect.
Then most likely, Mayor, if the cell phones aren't picking up, these guys above and, and, uh, Bill Addis, radios, you probably won't hit a tower if your cell phones.
Really?
Yeah.
Even with the, um, with the, would they put that repeater here in Morel? Does that, does that help?
It's gotten better, but there's no hundred percent. I mean, if you're not gonna hit with a cellphone, most likely you're not gonna hit the repeater with, with the radio.
I guess we'll, maybe we'll, if we get to that point, we're allowed to have one, maybe we can get a program just for.
We could test it.
They could test it out or whatever. I don't know, I just throw it out, throw it out there. I just know that they are, they're constantly out and that trail isn't working, so. Anything else?
Something we have to look into.
No.
All right, thank you, Chief.
All right.
All right. Uh, the C D B G and the C V programs, uh, report are in your packets. All right. Be resolved by the City Council, City of Collinsville to grant the City Clerk permission to apply for a countywide local share account grant on behalf of the city for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five application cycle. I assume it was there a second?
Second.
And Rita has informed me that we're applying for monies for a new salt, salt shed for our public works. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know that that's something that they, that Jimmy has wanted in, um, for some time now, because the old one is not really in, really in good shape. Okay, State Clerk, take the vote?
Councilwoman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Addis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tiberio? Councilwoman Keady?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Okay. Uh, be resolved by the City Council, City of Collinsville to accept the resignation of Samuel Bishop from the Collinsville Police Department effective August tenth, twenty twenty-five. I assume it was there a second?
Second.
Um, excited to see Sam go. I wish him luck, um, at the Attorney General's office. I think he'll be a great asset to them. He's been a wonderful police officer for us. Um, I know we will continue to see him here, but, um, I'm just, we're just excited to see him go. Thank you, to thank him for his service to the police department. State Clerk, take the vote?
Councilwoman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Addis? Councilwoman Tiberio? Councilwoman Keady?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Uh, be resolved by the City Council, City of Collinsville to advertise for position of full-time police officer for the purpose of filling a vacant police position and establishing an eligibility list from which all hiring for the position of public police officer is made. Act one-twenty certification will not be a requirement. Wages and benefits to be set by the Collinsville Police Officers Association contract. I assume it was there a second?
Second.
So Chief, um, with this not having the one-twenty certification be a requirement, what does that mean now for, uh, applicants? So if they come in here, don't have that, for them to be a full-time officer, do they have to have that?
They would have to go through the academy, yes. If we.
Okay.
They, they would have to go through the process. They would have to do the testing, the written, the physical, and the, uh, the interviews. And if we would hire somebody through that process without the one-twenty training, then the city would have to send them to the academy, pay for the academy, pay for the, uh, pay them wages, their, their, their patrolman wages while they were.
How long is, how long does this certification take?
Approximately six months.
Six months? So, in that timeframe, as that being in the academy, are they working for the city also, or no? They're just gonna be in school for six months?
Yeah, they would, they would be at the academy, being a city employee, getting paid by us.
And, and do you know what roughly like?
The problem is, if we went that direction, we, we, we more than likely would not go that direction this hiring. Because the next academy is not till next June.
Oh, okay.
And that person wouldn't be available till the end of next year or not this year.
Okay.
The problem is, but Union Town just recently put out an ad for applications. They received zero. So, we have to make it look a little more attractive to get applicants. That's one of the ways that I'm looking to do it. But in this case, for, to filling our position right now, I'm just looking to get people to apply, and then we could have a, a, a list to go if we need to hire in the future.
Okay.
We, we keep trying to test every time.
Right, right.
Somebody leaves, um, or, or we're not getting any, anybody, enough people to apply to build an eligibility list. That's a problem.
Okay.
We're lucky if we can get three applications out there. So we have to look at different ways to attract, make it more attractive to get people.
What is the normal, do you know what the normal cost is to send somebody to, to a academy?
I'd be guessing without probably getting a number, um, probably somewhere around four thousand dollars for the academy, I'm guessing.
Okay. All right. City Clerk, take the vote?
Councilwoman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Addis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tiberio? Councilwoman Keady?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Okay. I just really, I don't really know without.
Yeah, just.
Okay. Uh, be resolved by the City Council, City of Collinsville to introduce bail number two of twenty twenty-five and orders to the City of Collinsville, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinances eleven thirty-one and twelve eighty as codified at one dash four six three relating to qualifications of Shade Tree Commission members, refilling all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and providing an effective date. I assume is there a second?
Second.
So basically, this is, uh, we want to take away the residency requirement for individuals that would like to be on our Shade Tree Commission. Um, there's some individuals that live in number of townships that would like to participate, and this is a way for us to allow them to be a part of this commission. And of course, we always wanna make sure, encourage people to volunteer, so this is a way to get more volunteering. I think this is a positive change for that commission. Right?
Yep.
Uh, State Clerk, take the vote?
Councilwoman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilwoman Addis? Councilwoman Tiberio? Councilwoman Keady?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
How do you go back to what I just was talking about?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I don't wanna take up much more time, but. The problem is, there's a lot of people out there that are currently working a job, and they would like to be a police officer for the City of Collinsville. However, if they apply, because they're not certified, say, and they couldn't quit their job and go to the academy because they wouldn't, they wouldn't be paid, they wouldn't get to have an income. So, that's, that's one of the problems with, uh, only letting the application, let people apply that are on one point certified. So if somebody wants to be a policeman and they're working, say, Bay at EMS, they would have to quit their job. They wouldn't have an income if they went to the academy. So if we would hire someone that's not certified, then we could pay them their wage while they are in training.
So, Tim, uh, are we gonna have to negotiate an M M O with the union to do this? That's the first thing, right? Second thing, I guess we'd have to put some kind of a stipulation on the, on the hire. If we did hire somebody without it, that how many years they'd have to work for the city, or they'd have to pay that money back, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wouldn't that be a contract binding, like they would?
Yeah, those would have to be part of the M M O, the union, that.
And you don't, you don't, have you, have you, uh, have you discussed it with your, the C P O A, just to make sure that they're okay with this? Like, are, they're good with it?
Yeah, we've all discussed it.
Okay.
And we are all looking for ways to open things up to make someone wanna be a police.
Okay, okay. So that's something we have to do, we have to do that now, like we have to get that started now.
If you wanna, if you wanna start that before you hire somebody under those terms, you'd have to get that.
Well, we, we don't have to do it to advertise, right?
No, not to advertise, not to advertise.
But we get to the point where we wanna hire that person, we need to have an M M O.
Before you vote to hire somebody under those terms.
What if they fill the gap?
Well, it's a stipulation, you'd have to make it contract, that's all.
So if they fail, then they have to probably have to pay us back, right? I'm sorry, but I, but.
Right, I mean, that's.
I mean, cause we're like literally paying you to be an employee of the city and letting you go to school for six months. I think you would definitely be.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know what I mean? They'd have to be on the hook for that too.
And if they pass and get through the academy, they'd have to, uh, you know, keep.
Yeah, yes.
Keep working for, for year to year.
Yeah. So while, I, I just asked one more question. So while they would be in this academy, they would, they would not be permitted to do any kind of shift work or do any work, daily routine work here for the city, when the police?
I don't think, uh, the academy would.
Okay, I just, I don't know. I never dealt with, I never dealt with that.
It's full-time.
Okay.
So that would be like a full-time job.
So they go, and they go and live in this academy, or they drive?
If they're not act one-twenty, they won't be able to do it anymore.
Okay, so they have to have act one-twenty to be on duty at any time? Okay, perfect.
Well, the only thing we could have them do is answer phones downstairs, and we already have somebody, yeah.
Right. Oh, okay. Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you, Chief. Okay. All right. Be resolved by the City Council, City of Collinsville to accept a quote of fifty-three thousand sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents from Anchor Marine Group to provide and install an ADA-compliant fishing dock at Yawke Park. Uh, funds to be paid through the Co-Stars with a voting facility grant through the P A Fish and Boat Commission. I assume it was there a second?
Second.
So, um, I love the design of the boat, of the dock. Um, I think it's great. I want to thank Kerry for his due diligence and all this and giving this to us and getting the quotes. The only concern I have with all of this is we have to remove that thing from the river when it floods. When it's gonna flood, how are we going to do that? I mean, I want this. I mean, there's people that ask, I, I run into the community, they're really excited to have, have the ability, the, with, you know, special needs or, you know, disability, not special needs, but having disabilities and be able to fish on the river. And I want that to happen for them. But I, so there's fifty-three thousand on the, on the, um, sixty thousand or whatever, right? Was it sixty thousand, the bid to do the concrete work?
Just under.
So we still have, what was the full rate, a hundred and thirty-six thousand?
Yeah.
So we'll still have probably like twenty thousand dollars left over. I still wanna know, like, can we not get a trailer or something that that thing can be, something that's gonna help us remove it from the river?
Well, the email, the last email he sent said it would take four guys and a, what are those little bobcat?
Oh, it's kids' trailer.
And two trailers to get it out. My fear, and again, I want it too, but my fear is like four guys, so it's like a Saturday night, I have to find four guys available.
Well, we'd have to call them. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to call overtime.
Well, yeah, but I just mean like, you know, the way storms pop up and do whatever.
Well, I feel like we'd have to, this is gonna be like one of those things, like it, on the beginning of the week, if it looks like there's gonna be rain, like, you know, like a, a lot of rain called for, for that week, then that's when we really have to pull it out.
Cause I mean like.
But we have to figure out, like, we could pull it out, hold it up in the, further in the park, like out of the way, like, like, I'm just saying, like, cause transporting this back to the Public Works Building and then trans, it's gonna be a lot of work for five guys in our Public Works work to, to may be able to maintain.
So, in the drawings that Kerry sent, I didn't see anything that said how tall the poles were that it rides on.
It, I, I don't think that's.
You mean the one they, they stick down into the river, the riverbed?
Yeah, cause it rises and goes with the water, but how high?
But I think, I think that they're chained though, right? They're not, they're not, the, the poles don't go down through the, the dock itself.
I thought he said it can raise four, six feet. Is it four feet before it has to be removed?
So that's basically a rainstorm and them letting water out of.
Yes.
So, that was his, all along, he just kept saying that's his biggest concern was.
Our river generally.
Getting that thing out of the river. When we talk about it in the river park and what, he, it, it sounds like, once we got it out, that's all the further it needs to just get it out of harm's way. A lot like the times we get down there and we have to put the stuff in the visitor's beer or up on blocks.
I mean, there's definitely space.
But this sounds more free words than that.
You know, like the, because it takes.
Yeah, under the bridge.
It has to be like nine feet, ten feet to get to the parking lot.
Yeah.
So we could definitely move it, they just could just pull it out and move it back, you know, fifty feet or whatever, seventy-five feet out of the river.
Well, I only ask that because our river generally, it, it's between four and six feet constantly, up and down.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Well, it has to, I'm talking four feet from where the poles are. Poles are, it needs to rise another four feet.
At least.
Yeah, to get over those poles.
So we probably would be okay with probably between four and six feet.
I believe I'd.
Probably four and six feet at that level of the river.
For some reason, four feet was the, well, it can raise four feet before.
Well, the last two years, it probably wouldn't have mattered because it was so dry. You know what I mean? But like this year, it's just really rainy, so we're, you know.
Can we, can we vote to support to, to, to do this and then, and if we end up saying, we don't wanna do it, then we don't have to go through with it?
This particular one you can't, cause the, the, the motion is to actually accept the quote. So once you've accepted the quote, you're bound to the quote. The only thing you can do is make it conditional on something else. So, for example, conditioning on obtaining necessary funding for the additional equipment, you know.
Can we add that to it now, or we have to do it again?
No, you can, you can add it to now.
You guys okay with, you, you, you all okay with doing that that way, to say that initially you're on that getting the, the proper equipment to remove it from the river?
Yeah, I mean. Cause ice is another. Yeah. Cause ice is gonna be a concern also.
I would guess it'd have to come out in the winter.
I would say, I think maybe in the winter, I mean, we'd have to pull it in the winter time, but then we have to store it somewhere.
Exactly.
Well, or we, I mean, or it's tarp, I mean, we put it, you know, we put it.
I mean, I like the idea. I really do, having it. I mean, I, I think it'll, you know, bring some more people down there, but.
I would say, just, let's just say we go, we go and we get it, we get it, we use it, um, then we, we're finding that it's just, it's not feasible for us, it's not working out for us, can we then turn around and sell it? We could never sell it.
Well, I mean, at some point in the future, you guys like we could, unless it's specifically excluded as a condition of the brands, but generally, most brands have a condition that it is for some period of time.
Yeah.
If you sell it, you gotta pay the full brand amount back to the, in this case, the P A Fish and Boat Commission.
Yeah. Well, what would we need?
I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, we'd have to be loaded on a trailer, like some kind of a trailer, like a flatbed trailer.
You know, be able to drag it in and out all the time.
Like a lowboy. Cause literally you just would have to be pulled out onto that and.
You're gonna need something, cause how wide was the?
It's, it's, it's a circular.
That's what I mean, it's like an octagon. How wide? I can't remember how wide it was.
Yeah, I have it. Oh, was it octagon?
I believe so.
I don't have it.
Oh, right here. There, there's this thing right here. I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah, I do have it.
It looks like, it looks like the suit that we're giving.
Yeah.
Does it, your picture, don't you?
Oh, that's a big drill.
This is right here.
There you go. It's nineteen-nine wide. That's huge.
And the railing is ten?
One-train.
No, you're gonna have to have a specialty trailer, right?
I don't.
Is it this part that has to come out too, or just the, just the this?
All of it. It all has to come out. I mean, cause if it raises up, if it is four feet, if it raises up four feet past that, they might as well catch it naturally.
Is that saying ten-foot railing with seated fishing?
Yeah.
So the railing on there are ten feet high?
Sounds like.
How do you fish through, you get to fish through the railing?
Maybe let?
Oh, maybe. Oh, maybe ten-foot sections?
Yeah.
That pole looks really, um.
See, I thought he said four poles, but they're going.
It says three feet, it says, it says, it says two and a half inch metal pylons driven thirty-six inches into stream bed. So it's going down three feet.
Mm-hmm.
The ramp panels are four by sixteen by eight.
Tower other.
Just doesn't say how tall those pylons are.
I'm making a contingent on getting their funding for the equipment needed to transport and move it. That doesn't help us into having to do.
Right, right, right.
I mean, we even need to know how much this thing weighs to even try to get a trailer.
Well, they said it must not weigh, it must not be, you know, it's like docks, it must not be like.
I saw it, said that, you know.
Are you on that, you know what I mean, Sam?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to be.
Contingent.
Contingent, here, you can, that's the language you wanna use if you wanna just copy that.
I have one little problem, I saw there were other poles, like smaller poles than one in the pictures, but, went like other places.
Yeah, I thought he told us that it was at least four, but.
Yeah. But I thought this was also going to be like chained to the.
He said it's gonna be chained.
This is.
Yeah.
This is gonna be chained.
This is what I thought was chained. That's why I thought we only had to take that out. And like, you know, with the water rises, but it could be all of it, but either way, it was still a lot, and I mean, to get four guys here to do it every time, that's pretty much the whole of Public Works.
Yes.
Take a minute to move.
Yeah.
Maybe, we, we would be something, maybe the General Braddock Fish Club would wanna be the partner in on this, it's gonna be the main fishing. Okay, let me reread this. Feature resolved by the city council, city council will accept the quote of fifty-three thousand sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents from Anchor Marine Group to provide install an ADA compliant fishing dock at Yawk River Park, funds to be paid through Co-Stars, with the voting facility grant through the P A Fish and Boat Commission, contingent, contingent on obtaining sufficient funding to purchase the equipment and to remove and transport the fishing dock. And I assume it was their second.
Well, so that, that was, yeah, that was your motion, Bob, that was your agreement with that amendment?
Yep. Say, clerk, take a vote?
Council McKee?
Yes.
Councilman Tiberio, Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilman Topper?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes. Okay, just some, uh, quick reminders. Uh, there's a farmer's market, uh, every Thursday, uh, the next one is this Thursday, July seventeenth, uh, will be the twenty-fourth and thirty-first. Uh, there'll be August seventh and the twenty-first. Uh, the East Side Fire Hall from five P M. to eight P M. This Saturday, the Adopt a Block, uh, is at Yawk Park, it's at one P M. and ends at six, it's free, it's a great time to come down to Yawk Park. July nineteenth is also the, uh, story, snack and activity time at the Carnegie Free Library at ten A M. Uh, July twenty-first, they'll also be doing at ten A M. the story, snack and activity at the Twelfth Street Park. Lion Square Concert, uh, this Sunday is Winds of Change. And the twenty-seventh will be the Country Outlaw, they start at seven P M. at Lion Square in downtown. Uh, July twenty-sixth, the Amish Geniuses will be at the H R Parking Lot from eight to four P M. August thirteenth, uh, is the next Sunset Bazaar from five-thirty to nine at Cameron Park, vendors, food beverages and entertainment. Uh, hosted by Lori Palmer and Bonnie Turner with open mic style entertainment, which we heard earlier from James, they're gonna do some kind of a, a talent, uh, competition that starts in August, and then they'll have the, they're gonna add additional one on September tenth, they're gonna add a, uh, fun night, another Sunset Bazaar, Sunset Bazaar at Cameron Park from five-thirty to nine P M. Getting other, any other stuff going on this weekend? Okay, I'm gonna pass this over to you, Councilwoman Addison, we'll go back to.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor, health officers, reports in your packet, um, the quality of life tickets for twenty-twenty-five are in your packet, uh, majority of them looks like they've been paid. So at least people are paying the fines for their properties that we've maintained. Phadiamesses, report is in your packet, uh, June, they've responded to a hundred and seventy calls in Conusville, um, Chief Leighton, the New Haven report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, your fire department's, uh, June monthly report, we had a total of thirty-four calls, we had one structure fire, three dumpster fires, one vehicle pedestrian accident, five vehicle accident, two water rescues, two trees, one drowning, one train fire, five fire alarms, two floodings, two wired down, one electrical fire in a residence, two persons lying in the street, we assisted Conusville Township twice, we assisted Bullskin Township once, assisted Morrell twice, and assisted Squat Del Borough once. We had a total of ten point three men per call, we did thirty hours of fundraising in June, bingos, hoagies, and we did the fifty-fifty at the River Rally.
Busy. Hey, just a quick, you know, shout out to you guys, uh, you know, it was, was not a good day for us when we had a drowning in the river, but I will say that you all, really sprung into action, uh, I feel like you gave the greatest response you could ever give to a family to search for a loved one that was lost in that river and, and for, you know, three days, uh, two days, you, you all, from all over, came from all over, you know, you, I just wanna commend you chief on organizing all that and getting, everybody to come here with their rescue boats and, and get in hell water to try and find Mr. Grimm and, um, I just wanna tell you, I appreciate y'all so much for doing that, and also, I don't know if you wanna talk about the, the motor on the rescue boat?
Yes, the, uh, the new, uh, motor's in, we're currently train, training on it, uh, we're working on some other, uh, things with the boat, and we're gonna, uh, expand our, uh, water rescue guys as soon as we can get the next class underway.
Awesome, I know that we're gonna work on fundraising to get sonar put on your boat, um, because that is definitely an important piece of safety equipment to have on your boat when you're looking at the river.
Yeah, uh, we're looking at, uh, side scan sonar and a underwater drone.
Awesome.
So we're just trying to put as many tools in the toolbox as we can.
Well, clearly, I mean, this was on full display, on what is, what needs to be done when, you know, we have somebody that's possible drowning in the river.
I mean, we, we get a lot of folks on the river, a lot of folks on the bike trail, I mean, just this month at eleven-thirty at night, I think last week, we had someone wreck on an e-bike went over the hillside behind Martins. So.
Awesome, well, I, I appreciate you guys, I just, I know it's a lot of work and you're not being paid and, and you all are out there for hours and hours and hours and hours, not giving up, and, and I just, I just, I appreciate all of, after, after you put forward.
Thank you, folks, and everybody out there that's trying to help us out, thank you.
And I know you, you're getting, uh, contributions for this engine, and I know Bonnie's here, I just, I just wanna, I'm always gonna constantly thank Somerset Trust, um, because they truly, like, give when they can give, and they give all the time, and I know that you all are gonna, you were making a commitment to donate to help, for them to cover, recover, uh, costs of the new motor for their.
And then the Run Club, they went out of their way to help us out, and that was a nice, that was a nice evening when they invited us out before their run and.
Every little bit, every little bit. I just think it was, it was great, you showed everybody what the problem was with that motor, how the, that bottom, that engine, it was the prop, how the,
A prop.
The rocks and stuff gets stuck, sucked in there, and a new boat doesn't have that, it can't get in, the debris can't get in there to, to damage to them.
And also, instead of operating in three foot of water, we can operate for like nine to twelve inches of water.
Awesome. Wow, that's great. Okay.
Tom, you got anything you wanna add?
Regular grass twelve inches garbage goes out, gotta be in cans originally all times, please.
Yeah, and please quit feeding the cats in the city. Please quit feeding the cats, I get too many emails about people feeding cats and rodents and tearing their garbage open, please quit feeding the cats. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Um, yeah, quality of life, are we now, when they don't pay the, they, when they don't pay the fine, is it now being sent to collections? Since we, since we voted to go with the, what you would like, call it, credit tech?
No.
We are not?
No, because it goes to Haggery's office, and they collect it.
Okay, what happens if then they don't pay out there?
That's up to the judge, the judge decides that, we don't have, it's his, it is authority disposal as a police.
What was their reasoning then to do?
So there was, there was, there was, there were several that weren't paid, um, and that's partially my fault, for, for, for some reasons, one is like, I guess you wanted someone to dead, you should have paid that one, or if somebody moves out of town, if somebody moves out of town and we can't find them, it doesn't do us any good. Now, that we could give to the collection, so you can see if you like, but how much the cost is versus that, and there's only like two or three of those.
Okay.
Uh, most of the rest of them, if they don't pay them here directly, they go to Haggery's office.
Okay.
And then Haggery can dispose of, the minimum fine there is three hundred dollars, um, but he can do, you know, they do payment termination here, they can do community service in Little Oak for three hundred dollars, um, so it's really, it's up to him to decide what he wants to do.
So what if we just eliminate him and just send him to collections?
Okay, then again, I don't know.
Cause he can technically throw it out and we lose everything, right?
Yes, he can throw it out, we lose everything, however, he's gonna throw it out for a reason, does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
What, what is, what is the plan of action here, can't we say that we, we would let it, send it to them, be it sent to the magistrate, we send it straight to the credit tech?
Well, no, so, so tickets an opportunity for the property owner to resolve a violation before it becomes a criminal citation.
Well, quality of life, don't they go, they go, can they appeal to the help board?
They, they can, they can, so, once the appeal period has expired, um, and the ticket remains outstanding, if there's no further action taken on the ticket, then you can send it to collections. Um, but if there's further action taken on the ticket, then that, that eliminates the ability to collect that ticket similarly through a collection agency.
I guess my thought with the ticket is, is that typically my fines are a hundred to a hundred and fifty roughly a ticket, when they found, if they don't take care of it here, when it goes to Haggery's office, it's automatically a bill of three hundred dollars. So already backed, bumped that up to three hundred dollars, that's the minimum fine you can do, so that's why I kind of, if you go that direction, I mean, we just go the end of the life.
I just, I, I wonder what the, um, what's the, what's the turnaround there when it goes up to the magistrate's office, are, are we getting, are we getting, um, collection of fine, or i- is it turning into reduction or thrown out or, um, you know, a- anything else but payment?
Okay, so, anecdote, so I don't keep track of the fines from Haggery's, that comes under court, the chief gets, and so just to Google it, I can figure out which mine was his.
Right, right. Right, right.
And some of it's from years ago, so I guess, you know, um, but anecdote, most of them, he finds them guilty if they don't solve the problem, but anyway, they find it guilty anyway, if they solve the problem, cause they're past the hearing in the ten days for the appeal, and they're past the fourteen days to pay for it, so mostly finds it guilty.
Right.
Every once in a while, if they got a whole bunch of other issues going on, he'll throw them out, he'll throw a wall out if the problem is solved, that's pretty rare. Now, like I said, if he collects it or not, it depends on what you put in there.
How many are you actually having to take out there?
Currently, right now, I probably got about seven or eight right now sitting out there, I've had more than that, uh, depends on the person, so to speak. So we've got one person in town that they kinda come in waves, I get a complaint about it, and then a whole bunch of them may go out there. But, so, seven or eight right now, all of them.
So the ones that you have listed here that say the constables couldn't find them, those ones we could technically send to.
Yeah, so, so right, that, that one would be one we could send to collections, yes, but I don't know.
If, if there's been no citation issue on them?
Well, I think he already writes one, doesn't he, when he, isn't that a citation that he gives the property owner?
What do you mean for the tick for quality of life violation, that's not a citation.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
To take.
So, yeah, so, Tim, so what happens, we do an issue, a non-tracking citation to, to Haggery's, to, at Haggery's office, and then they issue away for warrants, and the constable, that's what they find, so it goes inactive.
Right. So once, once a citation's been issued, you can't send it to collections?
Okay, so even the ones that, if the constable can't find them, we're just outlawed?
Right, right, okay.
Jump, you have to, however you wanna handle it, if they don't pay down here for it.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
Say, that's the best option for us.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to wait it out, I mean, how much do we get from the, if it goes to Haggery, do we get our amount or do we get it all?
We would get all, we'd be our three hundred dollar, new, yeah, and whatever the fine is, yeah.
Okay.
Cause they got, the, 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 Haggery's, three hundred dollars, man, plus book costs, so they walk out and hang about four, four hundred dollars roughly.
The magistrate gets the court costs and we get the fine.
Yeah.
Right, we get all the fine.
I just don't know why somebody wouldn't just pay a fifty dollar fine and go out there and make four or something. I don't know. But, yeah, we're gonna have to definitely see what our best course of action is.
Well, I mean, we're not paying anything for credit tech though, like, they, they add the fee onto the person, so it's not costing us any money to have them available to us,
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, no.
if and when the situation arises.
It costs, they have to file anything down at this, down at Haggery's office.
Well, I'm, no, I'm just saying, like, you know what I mean, not just broadly, I'm just saying, like, that, credit tech isn't costing us anything.
No, it was, that's why we, with them, it was no charge.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm good.
Okay.
I suggest you to throw this out there, we, we can change organs and we can add a, that collections part to the organs if we like, I know we voted on that, but we can add a minimum cost. So if it goes to collections, your minimum fee is going to be three hundred dollars, no matter what you got before you, see what I'm saying? So unlike, so like a fine at Haggery's, we can bump up that amount to go to collections to make it worthwhile, if I can put it first, I, 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 Tim, is that something?
You, you could only, you can, you, what, we, we have talked about this.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to get that, we'll, we'll go. Okay, thank you, Councilman, so back over to you, Councilman Kiddy.
Alright, I have two, uh, resolutions for this evening. First, be resolved by the city council, city Conusville. Be resolved by the city council of the city Conusville that the current check processing system is outdated and inefficient, and therefore be resolved that the city council, city Conusville hereby approves the adoption and implementation of the Verify software for check scan. And I said.
Is there a second? Second. So this is gonna make us more efficient?
Yeah, it's gonna decrease the amount of times that, uh, you gotta take all the deposits to the bank, there's no, um, it's just, you get a deposit, scan it through, correct me if I'm wrong, Bonnie, but you scan the checks through, it pops up on the screen, they can go through to verify that the check that they have matches the amount in the system, they can change it in the system if there is, um, a scanning issue, and then it will automatically get, uh, deposited into accounts, and they don't have to, then go to the bank, correct?
Sweet. Sure, uh, Sheena's happy about that.
I'm happy about that, cause we have conversations about the deposits, like, watch her twice a week, so.
Awesome. Well, sweet, glad to hear, we're gonna.
I'm happy about it.
Alright, sweet.
Your training will be done right here, pre, real classes, she, everything, you have a twenty-four hour backup system, I don't wanna get caught up in the point, but, um, you're, um, you have, um, get, get away from this, um, mission.
Alright, thank you, say, clerk, take a vote?
Councilman Topper?
Yes.
Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilman Tiberio? Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
And the second one, be resolved by the city council, city Conusville, that the city of Conusville hereby adopts the TAP Heart and Lung Policy, this policy is intended to provide personnel, uh, with the understanding of leave provided under the Pennsylvania Enforcement Officer Disability Act, AKA Heart and Lung Act or H L A, fifty-three P S six thirty-seven, for services connected, uh, disabilities, and I assume.
Is there a second? Second. I think we just had this first person, first officer to use this?
Yeah, and there, there's a lot of, um, discussions on how, uh, heart lung claim is implemented, whether it needs to be submitted for one of those, what are, what's deducted and not deducted, and, um, typically, we don't have them, uh, so close together that if there's a change in staff, that it might become confusing as to how to handle the, the claims, so that it's best to have a policy in place, so that any future claims that come up, they can eas- easily just reference it and.
Do we have to have a, understanding with the union, this is, okay, not for this?
Not for us.
Yeah. Okay, say, clerk, take a vote?
Councilman Topper?
Yes.
Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Councilman Tiberio, Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir, good work to you, Councilman Topper?
Alright, thank you, Mayor, I have a few resolutions here, uh, first one, be resolved by the city council, the city of Conusville to grant permission to General Braddock's Fish Club to use Yawk River Park on September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five for a mentored youth fishing day, and I assume.
Is there a second? Second. Say, clerk, take a vote?
Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Councilman Tiberio, Councilman Addis?
Yes.
Councilman Topper?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
Be resolved by the city council, the city of Conusville to grant permission to General Braddock's Fish Club to use Yawk River Park on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five for their annual club picnic. Further authorizing items listed on the utilization form, and I assume.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say, clerk, take a vote?
Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Councilman Tiberio, Councilman Manata?
Yes.
Councilman Tupper?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Conizville to grant permission to General Braddock's Fish Club to have alcohol at Yawk River Park on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five for their club picnic and I assume move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need to have any kind of reliability policy for that?
You do, I mean, historically, you'd ask for liquor license coverage.
Does that have to be included in this resolution? Okay, just to make sure. Uh, see, Clark, take a vote?
Councilman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilman Manata?
Yes.
Councilman Tiberio, Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
And my last one, uh, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Conizville to terminate the contract with James Cox for the use of the concession stand at Yawk Park effective immediately and I assume move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, well, I just have to make, uh, definitely had a great proposal tonight, but just, and you personally take over the concession stand. So, hopefully we'll be able to work that out.
And with respect to this, there was the news that was sent and it's been ten days and nothing's been cured.
I've even called.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we made, made every attempt.
Yeah, I just wanted to refer, we went through those steps.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Whatever you told us that day, but hey, no.
Yeah.
Immediately.
In fairness, it is ten days, like yesterday, but yeah, it's been ten days.
Okay.
All right, see, Clark, take a vote?
Councilman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilman Manata?
Yeah.
Councilman Tiberio? Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.
Uh, that's all I have. I do know we discussed, did we end up, we, we had a request to possibly open the splash pad a little bit earlier?
Yes.
Did we end up?
I was waiting for your.
I, I, yeah, and then I said, I don't know why I didn't hit send, but I said I was good with it.
Because we were, we were, I had the request of, we would consider opening it like at ten or eleven. Still, you know, we're still closing at six, but opening it like an hour or two earlier. So, people with smaller children could take advantage of it earlier in the morning because their children would be napping at the time that we would be having it in the afternoon. I don't have an issue with it. I, I, it's been, Chief, have you been having any problems up there at all? I haven't heard anything, um, not on wood. I mean, it's still, people are up there every day. I, I run into people all the time and they're just so thankful for us to have this. They're using it, they're going. And we had one incident with the, 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 uh, baby diaper, uh, being flushed and hopefully that'll ever happen again. But I know we did, knocking off public, but I know we had vandalism down at East Park Bathroom down there. I don't know, uh, hopefully maybe we will look at cameras and see if we saw anybody coming out of there. I don't know. But it's just, it's frustrating when, when these, I'm gonna blame juveniles, uh, go down there and vandalize our parks. But so far, so go to Twelfth Street.
Cameras. Uh, we, we have great cameras now at Twelfth Street Park, at Washington Park. Um, we have good cameras down at Woodruff Park. Uh, the cameras both at East Park and over at the River Park really need, uh, they need upgraded.
Okay.
They've been there and there was issues that you well know with their, over the years, they were down there digging. They cut the lines and tried to splice it together.
They destroyed it.
They really need, they need going over and, uh, they need some, some replaced and they need upgraded.
Okay.
I think only half the, less than half of the cameras are coming up downstairs and she can't view them. So, we really need to look into upgrading those two places.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely want, I mean, one hundred percent, I mean, those cameras made a huge difference when we installed them. So, I want to make sure that they're.
The new ones that we have in place, they're working fantastic.
Well, great. Did we get, or they, um, was that, did he get up to Twelfth Street to get it, so, so you can view it downstairs?
She's been doing it, yeah.
Awesome. I'm gonna have to come down there. I'm gonna have to come down there and see that. Maybe Abraham and I will come down there real quick and just see real quick. Tim, do we have to, do we have to vote on anything if we want to change the hours of the splash pad? Or can we just do that, the twelve, since boss is correct?
You can do that administrative, as long as there's general consensus, council on that.
All right, I just, we'll get to give a poll to know that our cameras, you know, they'll be there ten or eleven. And then just, just to make sure the guys are up there unlocking it at that time.
I'm good.
All right, thank you, Paul.
All right, Councilwoman Tiberio is not here. Uh, the public works, the report is in your packets. And with that, we're gonna, we're gonna end this meeting. See y'all in office. Uh, be resolved by the City Council of City Conizville that this meeting and the City Council does hereby adjourn. I assume move. Is there a second?
Second.
See, Clark, take a vote?
Councilman Tupper?
Yes.
Councilman Manata?
Yes.
Councilman Tiberio, Councilman McKee?
Yes.
Mayor Lincoln?
Yes.